The, uh, called the meeting to order for the, uh, six o'clock budget workshop, special meeting of the Ojai City Council. Uh, June 28th, we've already called the roll, noted absences, and had the pledge of allegiance for the record. I want to point out that, um, my preference as chair tonight is that we handle the budget workshop and the, uh, another announcement that I'll make during the regular session at seven. But given that there are just three of us here tonight, um, I expect that we will, uh, proceed with review of the budget with the expectation of approving according to our statutory responsibility for the fiscal year, but with the expectation that we'll have agendized, um, uh, at the next regular city council meeting, a session to discuss further budget amendments in detail. I just want to make that announcement. And so with that, I believe, Mr. Livingston, are you the one leading off, or is Mr. McClary leading off on the budget workshop session?
Well, I'll take a stab at least getting this going. We had gone through several of the summaries at the, um, budget workshop that we did on June 14th, and so I know there were-
Mr. McClary, can I interrupt you?
Absolutely.
Uh, I just-
She's retracting that.
Oh, we have a retracted speaker card. Okay, continue, sorry.
Thank you. Um, wanted to pick up reviewing through the draft budget. Uh, we had gone through several sections of the budget at the June 14th budget workshop. However, we did not get a chance to go through the administrative section, uh, so I wanted to pick up from there and see if there was any other particular areas that council wanted me to cover. I think we had gotten through most of the other areas in the budget before, so if there are any particular areas that you would like me to highlight, um, or Mr. Livingston to highlight, be happy to do that, so.
Are you soliciting comments?
Sure.
Or not?
Sure. Well, I, really, the one thing I just wanted to go over quickly was just the administrative section, just because we hadn't touched on that.
Yeah, I, I know, I had some comments on the administrative section.
Okay.
I do, ma- interim, uh, Mayor Protem, sorry. I was gonna say interim mayor.
No.
Mayor Protem, Wyring. It's, could you, could, could, uh, Mr. McClary, just give us a quick overview also for the public's benefit of what sections we've gone over, just to give everybody a re- uh, refresher on where we're at?
A recap?
A recap.
Yeah, I was-
Short recap.
I was trying to find my list in this mess of paper here. Rudy, do you have your workshop, uh, worksheet from the June 14th meeting?
This one, or?
No, it was, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm looking for the agenda from that meeting. I know, I know the administrative section was, was one that we didn't get through, and we'd worked through most of the other ones, so, I'm sorry, I was actually looking for that right before the meeting started here, and I, I have misplaced it.
Could we just start with administrative?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, questions or presentation, which one do?
Let's go ahead with the questions.
Well, yes, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to, I'd like to start off.
Before we start, I, I wanted to just make a little clarification. There were a couple of items that were left for you on the diisters.
Yes.
The first one, it, they're not marked with the exhibits like they're supposed to have on there, then, um, but the one single-page document that's entitled at the top, oh, City of Ojai, City Council Budget Workshop, the FY 1516 Budget Adjustments, that is Exhibit A. That's just the one, the one page. Um, Exhibit C is the combination of the other two pages that we have given you, and one is the revenue section, one is the expenditure section, so.
I have an overview comment.
Okay.
Um, organizational chart, page 76.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, uh, a couple of things. It seems to me appropriate that, um, organizationally, since the records manager, I believe, is also serving as the deputy city clerk-
That's correct.
-that the function of deputy city clerk be put below the city clerk, 'cause for those functions, the dep- the city clerk is actually supervising the deputy city clerk for those component functions, I believe. Is that not correct?
Uh, certainly the-
I'm not talking about the entire, I'm not talking about the entire budget line of records manager, but it's actually records manager, city, deputy city clerk slash records manager, I believe.
The, if you want to get very technical, the, the act, the position is records manager, um, and we have, we have frequently, and that's the intent, is to use that person as a deputy city clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have used other staff members as deputy city clerks, for example, during the transition period when Ms. Bessore stepped down, uh, both myself and Amber Young were serving as deputy city clerks. So, certainly you're correct, there's a, a function there in terms of distinction. They're serving for and taking direction from the city clerk.
Right.
Um, in terms of the overall supervision and valuation of that records manager position, it would still fall to the city manager.
Certainly the records manager.
Right, right.
What I wanted to be clear about, from a city council person, a point of view, is that if a citizen is coming to the city clerk for, say, a records request, or a piece of information-
Right.
-there should be a clear implication that that request is, is, goes direct, uh, to the person providing the information, and does not have to go through the city manager's office.
Oh, yeah, understand.
And if the deputy city clerk box was put under city clerk, that would be, make that absolutely clear, is my point.
I would recommend that maybe we, uh, my suggestion would be that we put it as deputy city clerk with parentheses S, so it could be deputy city clerk or clerks.
Okay.
Um, but I agree, organizationally, they, they would report to and be directed by the city clerk.
Now, the city clerk doesn't need this, anybody's permission to ask the records, city, deputy city clerk to help with some records, uh, delivery, or document delivery to citizens, for example.
Correct, yeah, the only thing I just wanted to make clear, and I know council members know this, but for the public, is we don't have a separate and distinct position that we can make available, you know, to the city clerk.
No, I, I don't mean to imply that.
Right.
I, I look at the, at this as a functional chart, not a individual person chart.
Right, and I understand that, and, uh, so I, I agree with your point there.
And I don't think the city clerk thing, uh, excuse me.
Microphone.
I don't think this, is it on?
Yep.
You put me at three minutes, you got me making the-
(laughing)
I can't, I timer already.
And this is our new city clerk who will be sworn in soon.
Yes, but I, I should just point out that this city clerk would leave it to the city manager to evaluate the records manager. I would like to see Cheryl as deputy city clerk to function just as if I'm served, she can take that service.
Correct.
Is that clear? I mean, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Steve, I would like your opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And my other comment on the organizational chart is council has provided direction that I think should be in the organizational chart with respect to the building official answering directly to the city manager, and if we, that should be part of a budget document, organizational chart. Which is currently not, uh, on page 76.
I'm not, uh, in full agreement that I have direction from the council on that. Um, and I also have some issues because I, I feel that that's getting into the city manager's authority in terms of how the departments are organized. Certainly, the council has direction and control over the budgeting and the line items. Um, so those would be my, my response to that.
Well, my comment on that is this is part of the budget that we have to approve, which includes an organizational chart, and, which reflects the line of, uh, the line of authority and chain of command. And I thought the, I think the council is very clear how we expect the chain of command to be in the next fiscal year with respect to the building official answering directly to the city manager.
If, can we, yeah, get-
Please.
While I support you in that, in that recommendation, I think this is also one of those, uh, issues that we're gonna have to, um, continue when all five council members are here.
Okay.
But I do support you in, in, uh-
Well, I'll drop it for now, it can be subject to future amendment.
My notes on the matter show that there were some discussions on it, but there was no direction from council to do that.
No, I-
Direction I had was for the two included in the, in the RFP.
Yeah.
The RFP was very specific that the, uh, building official, when the new contract was signed, would answer directly to the city manager. And maybe that's the time to consider, and I think when all five of us here, we can discuss whether we want to make an advisory opinion of, of starting, making that decision implemented first or, rather, sooner rather than later. Councilperson, Lee.
I, I want to go back to the city clerk and the discussion, uh, just trying to grasp my thoughts about your recommendation about putting the deputy city clerk under the city clerk, and what I'm hearing is that even though we do have a, like, this city clerk, uh, the, the valuation and the direction that the deputy city clerk is gonna be received by our city manager, or whoever that is in the future, and our city clerk has expressed that she would want that direction to come from our, our city manager. So, even though I, I do stand for clarity in, in terms of representing the floor chart correctly, I also think that that might automatically confuse the public if that's not the reality of what's going on. If, if we do put the city clerk under here, it shows that the deputy, the city clerk shouldn't, should be appearing to the city clerk under certain duties of, under her job description. So, I, I, uh, even though it's, it's clarifying the position, at the ti- at the same time, it's muddying the, the, uh, direction of where the deputy city clerk should really be. I, I mean, I, and what I heard from our interim city manager is that there's really not a job description of the deputy city clerk. So, I, I, I feel like if we are gonna have this conversation, we'd, should have it with the five council members present, and then we should, at that time, decide where she's gonna get the direction. If our elected city clerk is gonna have that, that authority, then it should be clear to whoever's gonna be running for city clerk that they do have authority over the deputy city clerk.
Okay, well, let's-
Does that make sense? I mean, I just don't want to overthink this.
No, I don't, I don't agree, but I agree that we shouldn't discuss it anymore tonight, until all five of us are here. Okay?
We're just getting really into the weeds, and I don't know if this-
No, Councilman Wyring, this is what I just heard simply. I heard there were two functions here. One is the city clerk has to respond to the citizens of this community, and can't have any interference from anyone from-
Correct.
-the council or from city staff.
Correct.
And that the deputy city clerk should have that same responsibility. That's the only thing that I heard that would benefit the assistant being under the, the direction of the city clerk. As far as the records-keeping aspect of that, that's entirely different, and that's totally under the purview of the city manager. So, that's what I, that's what I heard, and I don't think there's any conflict as to who supervises Cheryl Shaw. Um, I think the bigger issue was, in lieu of our new city clerk not being here, and Cheryl is the assistant and has to step in and provide her responsi- her duties, that she can't have interference. That's what I heard.
Correct.
Well, I also heard that our interns, our appointed city clerk doesn't feel comfortable directing the deputy city clerk, and I also heard that there's really not a position description.
I'm not sure that's what I heard.
Well, she's gonna have to train her and, and at least, um, instill in her the responsibilities of that position, but I don't think she's gonna, again, supervise her, her in any other aspect of her job, other than as her assistant. That's what I heard.
And it would also be good to look at the job description there, if there isn't any job description of that, before we start putting things underneath different department heads.
All right, well, then, we'll continue that, for, uh, well, obviously, we're going to be discussing this budget, uh, after tonight at the next meeting, regular meeting, when all five of us are here. I have one more question, really quick. Uh, is, has there been agreement on page 79 that we're gonna take Libby Bowl operations out of the community outreach section and put it in public works?
No, I do not know, I do not recommend that we move that into public works. The, this is not a function of the maintenance, or anything with that has to do with the bowl. To refresh everyone's memory, this was actually a contingency line item that was proposed by the previous city manager when we were going through the transition from the Libby Bowl Foundation to the city taking over management, and at that time, we didn't know what we were going to, how we were going to handle management, and we want to make sure that we had enough money in the budget to be able to do that. At the time, we weren't sure if we were gonna be doing marketing, outreach, publicity, or whatnot, so it was a, it was a large number put in place just to provide for some contingencies. My recommendation would be to knock that $50,000s down to $10,000, and move it into the city manager's department. That would pay for anything that we need to do, whether it be an on-call technician for the bowl, uh, any other support services, if we were to do any promotion or marketing or anything like that. The other aspects of the maintenance of the bowl are and have been in the public works budget, and would not, um, and so that, that is, that is in there, as it has been before.
So, that line item will be, will be moved out of community outreach into the city manager's department?
Correct, that's, that was my recommendation. I did speak with the finance director about that earlier today, and, um, and he, we'd be, we're happy to make that move.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
And I, I lied, I have one more question. Where is the city clerk salary in this budget? I see where the city treasurer, uh, department is on page 80, and I see city clerk slash records manager, uh, in the, um, uh, in the city manager, uh, section. Is that, is the city clerk, uh, included in the city manager department where it is records on page 85, where it says city clerk slash records manager, salary and benefits? Does that include the, it not, it's not broken out separately the way city treasurer is? It's included in that?
That's correct. That includes the city clerk, records manager. In fact, most of that is actually records manager.
Right, so this is the record manager, the deputy city clerk, and the city clerk.
I believe it's that third item down, that 010, 1107, 0013, 000 salary special, that 4,200, if you divide that by 12, I believe that's 350.
That's the city clerk stipend, right?
So, that, that matches up.
Okay. I just noted a, just a slight asymmetry between the treatment of the two, those two elected officials in the, in the budget structure. That's all.
Yeah, probably because we had the one person before that had them both, so, yeah, duly noted.
Okay.
Mayor Protem, I had a question.
Please, go ahead.
I had a follow-up question on Libby Bowl operation, because we talked about the accuracy of that 50,000. How much was actually spent during last year? It was, it was a lot less, so I just wanted to see if you had those numbers.
In fiscal 16, we have spent approximately $8,000 to date.
Approximately 8,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Mar-
Councilman Hanny?
Um, I believe that's why Steve is transferring it back under his jurisdiction and keeping it at $10,000, is the fact that we only spent 8,000 of the 50 allocated, so.
So, those 40, uh, the other 40,000, or where did they, or 42,000, are they just go back to general fund?
Correct, it'll go back to the fund balance, right.
And then the proposed budget for 2016, 17 would be 10,000 under the city manager, city manager department?
That's correct, that's my recommendation, council member.
Um, Mr. McClary, did you have some other comments you wish to make about administration?
No, sir.
Uh, any other comments from other council people on administration on the workshop? I, I have one other comment I would like to make, um, on, and this is, uh, administration broadly, broad, I made some notes here, I didn't have time to finish putting them in total readable form. I'm gonna express an opinion for fur- for further action when we, when we do budget amendments, not tonight, um, but I wanted to just point out that I think that the, um, compensation for the city clerk and the city treasurer is ridiculously low. If we actually expect people to run for these offices and take the job seriously, 150 a month for the city treasurer is ridiculous, and 350 a month for the city clerk is ridiculous. That is my opinion. That is one council person's opinion, and I'm only gonna ask a question of the city attorney, because we will be looking at, at this in the future, but I want to plant the idea. We can simply change that line item, and that becomes a change by resolution by majority of council, correct? Do you wish to do so?
Yes, Mayor Protem, the council has the power under Government Code, Section 36517, to set the treasurer, the treasurer and the city clerk's salary at any level desired by resolution.
Right, so I, I'm going to be making a future suggestion for changing the, amending the budget to increase the compensation for those two positions. I just want to make that comment.
Okay. If I could just follow up with that, and, and just, just so that the public doesn't have any misunderstanding, that's not something under staff's control, um, nor, nor we, did we make any recommendation on that, so.
It's purely our-
Yeah.
It would be purely a council matter, under general law city.
Right, it's not, not an area that we felt we could provide a recommendation on.
Can I ask a question, please? If the, isn't the salary for the clerk and the treasurer, uh, set by ordinance?
No.
I believe it may have been set by ordinance in the past, but the government code will let the council adjust it by resolution.
I looked, it's not in the municipal code.
Ah, then it may not have been-
Oh, okay.
It's set by resolution.
Okay.
And, uh, the state, the general law, state statutes are very clear, that it can be set by, uh, resolution of the council.
And that would be even if it had previously been set by ordinance. They can change it.
I've been here for 21 years, I couldn't change it.
Hmm. You know, there's a lot of things around-
They amended a lot of these sections in 2010, so that may have been changed.
That's why, okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, Mr. McClary, our, our other members of council, I've been monopolizing the questions, I'm sure there are other questions.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
No, with administrative section, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, the-
McClary.
Next section that, uh, I would like you to cover then would be the police department budget, starting on page 91 of your binder. And, uh, we did have some discussion at the last regular meeting about the level of service request, um, so, and I know we did get some direction from council to hold to the current service levels, so this recommended budget does reflect that, however, we didn't get a chance to review any of this specifically at the last budget workshop, so, if you have any questions, um, Mr. Livingston and Chief Kenny are also here.
I, I appreciate that you found the lease.
Yes, well, both, kudos to Chief Kenny, who, earlier you found it, so, but we did have it in our files.
(laughing).
Um, Chief Kenny, you had any other comments, or?
No. Just the same level of service and the contract. I think Rudy has the projections for, um, the amount that it's supposed to go up at, what, 4.1 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no changes at all, just carrying it forward year to year.
Right, we had, we had non-financial questions when you weren't here.
Uh-huh.
But those are on, will be ongoing.
Okay.
Uh, one of them being that the sheriff had indicated last year that he was, they were gonna be interested in modernizing the contract, which didn't happen, and we're still interested.
Yeah, my understanding is that contract's still tied up out in Thousand Oaks for some reason.
Okay.
But, um, as soon as I get word, I'll make sure you're, you're notified.
Thank you.
I don't have any financial questions.
Mr. McClary?
Okay, thank you. Um, at, at the last budget workshop, we did look at the contract services and building and planning revenue, but we did not actually get to the community development budget, so that would be the next in there section, page 96. Uh, as we've spoken before, uh, we are proposing a slight change there in terms of moving a current, um, part-time, uh, building tech position and creating a full-time building tech position, and we are continuing the associate planner, uh, which remains a vacant position. Do you have to answer any questions about community development?
Uh-
Rudy, did you have any updates for council on community development?
The only update I had for community development is we, I went back and was able to look at some of the revenue projections, and we made a slight increase, about $20,000 in the, um, building revenues that we're projecting for this year, so.
Could you direct them to that line item, so that we can-
That's, that's actually on your page, your, the little sheet, the little packet that I gave you. This packet, the way, no, the, these, the way these are organized here, just so you know, is all the white stuff is what was in the proposed budget, okay? To the right of the white is adjustments that I have found as I've been going through things, and other items that needed to be dealt with. When we get to the, if, on the expenditure one, there's also a purple column, which is stuff that I'm not including in, in my proposed adjustments. These are things that were discussed at the workshop last, last, um, meeting and various other things, so, if we, if you look in here on page- It's on page five of 27, and exhibit, is this, actually Exhibit C, I believe, here.
Sure I have the right one here.
It's a small one. This is a small one.
This one, okay.
It's a small one, and it's page five. We, we added $20,000 in the plan check fee area in there, um, because the building fees, they can cover several different general ledger line items, and so, we looked at the total number and, and, if calculated what the change should be, and I, I put it onto that line item, it would, technically could be split up between various different line items, but for, for ease of presentation, I put it on that line there.
Nope. Well, I have, I have other questions.
Go ahead, Councilman Hanny.
The, um, Steve, on the assistant planner salary and the contract salary, is the, the contract salary is $100,000 a year, that's what we have budgeted for contract work right now?
Uh, let me get to that page.
That's gonna be in the big, in the, the Y one here, or here.
Or, right, right, let me just get there.
Are you looking for, are you looking for the salaries, or are you looking for the contract?
Yeah, just looking for the, yeah, well, the contract, um, for planner is, did we earmark $100,000 in CDD in the budget for contractual?
Well, there's, there are actual several, well, for the contract planners, if you look on page 100 of the proposed budget, those items are listed on there, and it would be on this sheet here, it would be a page, um, page 19 of the, of the Y legal size paper.
Yep.
You see on there, we've got listed several different, um, contract-
We have contract services.
Services in there. Um, it's actually more than $100,000, so-
$180,000.
Correct.
Okay, all right, and, and, because I was just looking at, um, if we were to actually hire a contract planner, um, what are we offering for their salary range right now?
You mean if we were to hire the associate planner?
Yes.
Um, I want to say that the range goes up to about 85,000 or 89,000, starts probably in the low to mid 70s.
So, so this funding is covering the interim until we actually make that hire? The $180,000 you have earmarked to cover?
This, this funding, right, it would, it would help, it would cover both the gap that we have right now in the permanent staffing, and then any other additional planning work that we're not able to handle within-house staff.
Okay, and this might be out of the budget question, but right now, we're, um, uh, we're marketing for that associate planner position, and we just can't seem to find one.
Correct, yeah, and, uh, I'm-
Or are we getting applicants that just don't, we don't feel qualified for our community, is that?
We, we have not been able to find, um, really strong applicants, and I would go a step further to say that we've, uh, we're not getting a significant number. I mean, you know, we're not getting many, uh, and the ones that we're getting have, um, have, have not quite been what we were looking for, so, my thought actually going forward would be to perhaps consider engaging a recruiter, um, rather than continuing to beat our head against, uh, the table here without success.
I, I've looked at it, um, that way, and also another way would be, um, we have a requirement of five years' experience at a, uh, assistant planner level.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Um, so that's gonna limit-
Three to five, right.
Three to five, that limits the pool of, of people-
Right.
-looking.
Yes, does.
And then our salary range, is it in the bottom, in the middle, or at the top?
Uh, we actually think it's fairly comparable, um, but again, it's probably not as competitive as some other communities, uh, and then you factor in, um, you know, local housing costs, um, uh, the ability to commute is a little more difficult to Ojai, so those are all factors that come into play when someone makes a decision on whether to apply or accept the position.
So, my thoughts are on that is, is, uh, one of our salary ranges is, let's say, 150 to, let's say, 100 to 150,000 dollars a year. If I took your $85 an hour and penciled out it, at 2,040 hours a year, what's that, 160,000? Something like that, a little, little greater. Um, I don't need to know that, that number, Rudy, I'm just talk, I'm just talking hypotheticals right now. Do we want to look at maybe lowering the, the requirement of what we're looking for, and maybe look for something that has experience, maybe not as much as, as what right now we're looking for, and bring them on board and train them, and, and bring them into the Ojai community and teach them, and, and just, you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I do.
There are two ways of doing it.
I, I completely understand, and quite, and quite frankly, it's a, it's a wonderful concept. The challenge for us has been to be able to have the existing staff be able to take the time to mentor and train and review the work of that individual. I know the thinking was to try to get somebody on board who had the three to five years of experience, who would be able to basically hand them something as a whole package and say, this is your project, this is your task, you know what to do with this, more or less, I'm here for your guidance, or when you get stuck, or, you know, to give you some background, as opposed to somebody who you need to spend, you know, several hours a week, not bringing them up to speed, but training them and walking them through and hand-holding and that type of thing, so. And again, it's all, it's all scalable.
Right.
You know, certainly with less experience, you pay less, you probably need to give more supervision, and then obviously, if you go the opposite way, less, less supervision needed, generally higher pay required.
I, I guess the benefit to me is the continuity of having one person here full-time that's learning our system and learning our methodologies and being a part of our community.
Absolutely.
Versus the contract planners, I think are exceptional, the ones that we bring in.
Certainly.
But, again, they're here two days a week, or they're here three days a week, and there's a lack of continuity and a lack of being community.
Sure.
That's all, but, so I'm just talking about that as a, as we look at a budgetary number.
Yeah, we're looking at, and I just, just to reiterate my feelings about that, we've been trying it one way for a while.
Yep.
Maybe we need to think about changing, changing it to another way.
Right.
That's all, that's my only comment.
I don't disagree, right? You've got to try something different if what you're doing's not working, so, and I, and philosophically, I'm in complete alignment with that, Councilmember Haney. I, I feel very strongly that, and again, this is no knock on the contract stuff, on the contract staff that we've had, they've been very excellent, but you do lack a little bit of that continuity. You know, it's a little different when you're there day in and day out, and you get to know the history and the community a little bit better. Again, it's not to say that the people aren't here, aren't, aren't giving us everything that they can. The other issue, quite frankly, that we found, this is nothing new to the council, as I've said before, it's really difficult right now to find qualified contract planners, so a lot of times we're having to go to the pump, we can't find the 87 Octane, we're having to buy the 92, and they do great work for us, but that would be work if we had somebody available at a lower rate or in-house, we would, we would be shifting that work to them.
Councilman Law, did you have a comment? And I, I want to make just a comment also, that I see people in the audience here that are here to discuss budget requests for particular organizations, I assume? No, yes? Are you seeking to be discussing your community, your request for particular organizations during this workshop?
If you're looking for me?
I'm looking at all of you.
Just to be available for...
Okay, all right, because here, here's what I want to make a comment, because I want to respect people's time, all right, and exercising prerogative as chair. We're probably going to put the, the, the budget at the end of the agenda during the 7 o'clock session. I don't want you to have to be waiting here all night, and so, I'm wondering if I should exercise a prerogative of inviting people to make their comments, if they have any, between now and 7:00, instead of making them wait till the end of the meeting for the action on the budget at the 7 o'clock meeting. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm open to that, if they're here to make, if they're here to make a statement, if they're here to provide information, then they can make a choice.
I just want to inform you that that's what's going to happen, is we're probably going to have to put the budget item at the end of the agenda.
And, and one other thing, we're more likely going to approve a budget tonight, but we're going to take it back to council and actually review specific line items, and one of those line items are going to be, that pertain to each one of you.
The intent is not to act on the individual organizational request tonight, we'll just be approving the total amount, subject to amendment, because there's only three of us here.
Right, and we want the whole body to be a part of that.
But if you'd like to make a comment, please do so. I'm just trying to be respectful of everyone's time here.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We generally enlist our museum supporters to come and to share their thoughts and share their support of the museum. They tend to be a little bit older than I am old. We have in the past set there, and, let's see, one year we went through two hours and 45 minutes of testing of fire hydrants. We're all professionals, we're certified on doing that after sitting through two hours and 45 minutes. I worry about the agenda item that would follow the budget one, which I'm guessing is the, possibly the reason it got moved up. That could take perhaps longer than the fire hydrant certification took. During the fire hydrant certification, we barely made it on the agenda, I think we started at 10:28 that night, thereby beating the cutoff by two minutes by a little maneuvering, so I guess I'm a little worried about that, your...
What I, what I think our intent is going to be, is that because there's just three of us here tonight, we are not going to be dividing up the money for community organizations tonight, just approving the budget, and then having at the next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll have a budget amendment session at the beginning of the meeting where we will make those decisions. That's, I think, our intent.
Right, so, so what you should be hearing is, as, as tonight, what you've requested is going to be approved, it will be discussed later on, and it might be amended.
We're not going to discuss, we're not going to be dividing line items tonight.
Right.
So, what we requested is going to be approved as a part of an overall budget number to meet the requirements of having the budget by June 30th at midnight. I'm a budget guy, Rudy could tell you that. And so, so you're in general going to approve the amount without dealing with the specifics, what you're going to do in the next budget meeting, so...
Come back when all council is present.
We're going to, so, I just don't want to waste your time, we're not going to go through that tonight, we're going to, we're just going to approve the overall umbrella amount and not do the division into specifics tonight.
Okay, okay, so...
You don't have to be worried if you go away, in other words.
I'm just, this isn't my first rodeo in doing this request with the city council. In preparation for the meeting tonight and understanding what's going on, I called and actually spoke with Amber Young, who is the gatekeeper for Steve, and I asked exactly what her best idea was and when to invite people to the meeting tonight, and we guessed that the best idea was 7:00, and so we put that word out.
Right.
So, I will, we're sorry for that.
We're sorry for that, but I, I looked at you and I did not want you to be, we convene at 7:00 and you'd be waiting for hours when we change the budget, because it's not going to matter tonight.
Okay.
We're not going to divide it up into specific organizations tonight.
Again, I've been doing budgets since 1980 for mid-sized corporations, I understand how budgets work, and so, I, I understand what it is to meet a deadline and to feather it out or fulfill it.
Yeah.
And further time when you have a full committee. Again, I was surprised when I saw three of you, that was kind of, the bells were ringing and the warning signs were going off.
Not, not appropriate for the three of us to be making those decisions.
I do appreciate you letting us know ahead of time, I will text out to people.
Thank you.
And, again, my name's Brian Akins, I'm the treasurer of the Ojai Valley Museum and a member of the historic preservation.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Mr., Mr. Summers?
Thank you. Just one point to note, that tonight, there will be a public hearing on this budget pushed to the end of the agenda.
Yes.
So, if anyone does wish to stay, they're welcome to comment. Certainly, the council will take comment from anyone who wishes to comment. The, the point, as you've rightly noted, is that the council won't be making hard decisions on these community organization line items until there's all five.
Exactly.
But certainly, those who wish to speak will be able to.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And you wish, go ahead.
Russell Sidney, Executive Director for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The only concern that came up last time that I was not sure whether that has been communicated clearly or not, is that the line item that we were mentioned in the budget had a $25,000 allocation. I understand Mr. McClary has, has realized, has found out, or sorted out, I should say, that, in fact, our budget for the last year was $50,000, and I don't know if that, where that money is and what's going on right now, but we're asking for the same amount, not an increase from 25 to 50 for the fiscal year.
So noted, and that's not the reason for our actions tonight, it's the fact there's just three of us here.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. McClary?
Just to note on that particular matter, I mean, there, there was a budget adjustment made mid-year, it was not reflected in the, the documents we put out in the proposed budget. Workloads and other issues did not allow us to get all those into our accounting system, but that has, that has definitely been approved.
That will all be available and clear at the first meeting in July.
Yes, absolutely.
The detail.
Yep.
Okay, all right, we've got a few minutes left. Mr. McClary?
Yeah, I need to spend a little time going through the capital improvement plan. Mr. Livingston will walk you through that, and while he's doing that, I'm going to grab something out of my office very quickly.
Okay.
That's the big one, right?
Well, no, actually, it's, it's a small one, and it actually was, it was given to you at the last budget workshop.
Yeah, I didn't.
But it's in the, there's a...
Get that in there.
At the back of the proposed budget document, there, there is a version of it, it's not exactly current. We updated with one, we provided council the last budget.
Okay.
Workshop on the 14th.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, so, we actually have gone, we have, Mr. Grant and I, we worked together on putting this, this budget together for the capital improvement plan, looking at what are, yes...
May I, may I ask a question? Is it, is it on, is it the Exhibit B for, on our, on our second item of the regular meeting agenda, is that the one that you're referring to?
That's where it is.
Okay. Because we do have one in the packet, and, and then we also have one on the Exhibit B of our...
It's supposed to be in the packet, but I couldn't find it in my copies, so...
Just to make sure we're all following you.
Yeah, my copy did not have, my copy of the packet didn't have, have that in there, so I'm hoping it's in there for all of you. If not, maybe we'll get one. So, we, we, we look at, I mean, there's two things, when we're looking at the capital improvement plan, we're looking at a long-range plan, which is basically a five-year plan, and, and as we get closer, further into the plan, we, we refine that so that the, the next year's budget, that we're looking at the fiscal '17 budget, that is much more, it's more refined on what the things we're actually going to be doing. We are still planning, I'm looking for, where's my summary schedule here? We, we're planning to, to bring in several, we've got several projects going on, we have a bunch of, we have several grants that are going to, we are going to be having in this next year. One of those, some of those are TDA grants, which we're going to be using for things like crosswalk improvements by Northoff High School and other places in, in the city to provide a more safer access to pedestrians crossing those roads. We have sidewalk improvements that are on the schedule, we have a continuation of about a million dollars that we're planning to spend on our roads and streets, continuing with what we've been able to do in the last couple of years. We have some, some grant funds that we're going to be using in the, the trolley system, we're going to be putting, they're going to be putting in a new wash pad over at the yard there so that they can wash them, and then also put a sound wall so that it'll, it'll help to provide a, a buffer for the noise to the, the neighbors in the area. We, if you go through, this is, the capital improvement plan that we have shown here, it, it breaks things down into various, into the different functions or the different areas within the city, and the parks, we're looking at, on, on the plan there, we are looking to remodel the Lower Libby restrooms, I understand, I've never been down there, to be honest with you, but I understand that they are in dire need of some renovations, and so we...
That'll motivate you, take the walk.
Yeah, I think I will, they're, you know, I hear that they're, they're pretty in need of some, some, some upgrades, at least that's what Mr. Kotsis always tells me.
We describe them as rustic.
Rustic, yeah, that's probably about right. But we're, we are, we did program in $200,000 for that, so that's one that's been out there for quite a while. We're progressing with the picnic area and canopy pad over at Sarzati Park. I believe that the initial work is actually being started now, and, and a lot of that work will be finished up and, at the end of the summer. We're not going to take all the, the areas out during the prime summertime, but we'll be, the, the work is progressing there. We have budgeted in here, at least, to get going on trying to get some, some lights at the skate park, which is something that has been on the, the desire of the, the Parks and Rec Commission, and help out with our community there. If you look at the complete street area...
Isn't, isn't that plan complete?
The, the plan for, the actual plan?
The plan for the lighting complete?
Yeah, it's been approved, we actually got an extension from Planning Commission because the original permit had expired. What we're waiting for would be the community partners to come in with, with their funds, and we're ready, willing, and able to work with them, and happy to have that discussion at any time.
Thank you. Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, if you, if we continue on, on the, the proposed capital plan on, on the complete street area, you'll see in there that we have quite a bit of, actually, this version here that I have in front of me has only 920,000, that number's actually been pushed up over a million dollars because we found some additional, we found some deferred revenues that have been, we received from some developer deposits in other areas that we brought, and we, we found that money that we can move forward with using those and helping to push these projects forward.
Does the number of 1,010,930 sound right?
That sounds about right.
Okay.
Because this one that I had, like I said, somehow it's not in my packet for tonight's meeting, I don't know what happened to it. So, I'm going off of the old one, but that's approximately the right, that's the right number. Addition to that, we're, we're going to continue on improving in some of the parking lots that are in very bad need of repair here. Here at the, you know, City Hall, we, our parking lot is, is in bad shape, but there's also some other, where there was, it's on the plan to look at doing the parking lots over at the recs department. One concern that has been raised by the commission there, though, is that they're hoping to be able to make some, some modifications to the flow of traffic in that area, and the question is, do we go ahead and make the, you know, the renovations to the parking lots and then potentially have to tear some things up in the future, so that's...
Well, doesn't the master plan address some of that?
Uh huh.
So, we have to have that complete, the master plan, before we do anything?
Yeah, so there, so that's in discussions right now, but these are the things that are on here. We are in the process of doing some, let's see what, some of the other couple of things here, some, there are some drainage line repairs and maintenance that we have going on right now, as these, as the city gets older, and these, some of these pipes that have been in the ground for probably 60, 70, 80 years, a lot of those have to be, you know, renovated and, and fixed, and we've got those on the plan. We're looking at, in the transit area, I mentioned the, the wash pad and the sound wall, but there's also a security gate that is in the works that we're hoping to get in, that they're, they're planning to get done this year also. Other highlights of the plan...
Rudy, can, Mayor?
Councilman Haney?
Can I interject something? Just a quick question came to mind. The, we had asked to set aside some funding for the grass renovation at Libby Bowl, and I was just wondering...
The restoration of the lawn area?
Restoration of the lawn area, and I was just wondering, does that restoration money come out, out of Greg Grant's Public Works, or does that come out of, or would that come out of the CIP for recreation and parks? Because right, right now, it isn't that area of Libby Park, isn't that under the purview of Public Works?
To, to be honest, I'm not quite sure where it's programmed, whether it comes out of Fund 31, or whether it comes out of the general fund budget, really has, is dependent upon the nature of the, of the project, whether, whether it's, it's considered kind of a capital project, or whether it's considered a maintenance-type project, and I don't know, Steve, or you?
That would, that would definitely be, in my mind, a capital project, it's not a maintenance, it's a significant change, improvement there, so, I think we would be just looking for some direction from council, if that was something they wanted to do in a, in a budget. I understand that's something that the, the one particular Libby Bowl committee is looking into some options on that.
Right, but we wanted to set aside some funding for, in the event that we decide to move forward on it in 2017, and I was just wondering how that, what area of the budget that would come out of, whether it would be out of Public Works or out of recreation and parks as far as the CIP monies?
My, my recommendation, it would be a capital improvement project under Public Works.
Yeah, and not using up, you're talking about the parks, the rec surplus money that we are transferring, yeah, this would definitely be out of the other, the other source of funds.
Although that's a council call.
Yeah.
To be clear.
Councilperson Haney, if you could, I, I think we, the council as a whole would appreciate as soon as possible some kind of recommendation on a design option, I believe you have a couple to look at, and if you, that's, a cost estimate would be, would follow a, a design stipulation, I would think.
I discussed this with Amber Young yesterday, and I think we're going to try and meet with Greg Grant next week and actually walk the facility in the specific area, and then come back to council with some type of recommendation.
And we may have to make a budget amendment in the future for that. And we may have to make a budget amendment in the future for that.
Yeah, until we have cost estimates and things that, we can't really put it, I mean, until we have an idea of what it's going to be, we really can't put it in the program, the copper program. But the, like I said, as we go, get closer to these things, we can make adjustments in there and refine things and reshuffle stuff and put them off to other years if that one needs to be, if that one needs to be moved up and others can be pushed back, we, it's, it's somewhat of a fluid process in there.
And then, and two other quick comments is, first of all, I want to thank someone for striping this parking lot. I don't know who did it, but we can actually see the white lines. So, thank you. And the second thing is, I'd still like to see somewhere in here that we set aside and actually we create a line item for sidewalk repair or sidewalk maintenance in the community. That's just, that's me personally, but...
We do have some line items in, in the CIP plan. What, what we, these get carried over from year to year, and sometimes you'll have a couple of years in between them, and so it actually drops off of the schedule, but it's on the schedule. It's just not in the printed version of the schedule, so I know that sidewalk repairs are in the capital plan.
Right. I also, I also know that we do, in conjunction with street repair, that we do the handicap repairs to all of the corners, and I understand that that's, you know, that's ongoing. But again, there's just a tremendous amount of trip and falls in this community, and I think that grinding is, is helpful, but I'm just thinking that an actual repair and coming up with some type of, of a, of a community, of a way to, of a way to involve the community and work together on making these repairs. That's, I guess, that's what I'm saying. If we can't allocate enough funding to make the repairs.
Well, I know that, that sidewalks are included in this large grant that we recently received, this ATB grant, that's going to be taking a lot of the corridor on Ojai Avenue, and so there's going to be, there's sidewalks in that project.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a few, we have five minutes left. Mr. McClary? Other comments?
I think we've covered everything, so unless you have any further questions or comments, we'd be happy to receive those.
We'll give five minutes then between adjourning the special meeting and the convening of the regular meeting, or adjourned for five minutes.